Sweet, alright.
Of course, now I can't see the agenda. So, just to go over some things that have happened. Already, we did raise the money to pay off the AMEX account and that account has been closed. Everything is out of all the page storage units and secured elsewhere. The equipment is all in 3700 and the rest of the stuff of AIM is at North Quincy Street, which is a county facility that we're getting free until December. Probably most of what's there will need to be dispersed into the community because we are not going to have space for all of those chairs anytime soon. But that's for another time to discuss. We do have a new board member, Katerina, has joined us and she is going to be our treasurer. And Valerie has left the board and that's it for now. So I'm hoping to have a little status quo for some time. Oh yeah, I did. I'm the president now. It's best to go really high, very fast. And so the the audit situation is such that the physical inventory, like all of the items that they were looking for, that's completed. The audit was paused briefly due to concerns about some of the things they were finding. They needed more time to do some investigation. As far as I know, all of that is complete, but I have not gotten any word from anybody. So as soon as I hear something, I promise I will pass it along because I do think that the completion of the audit is really key to making any giant strides. Somebody did ask about when I was moving, or we were all moving the things from the storage units about the archive. It is safely at the North Quincy Street location. It is mildly climate controlled in there, but it's probably better climate controlled than where it was. So I think it's going to be perfectly safe there. And then, moving on to what we're talking about, getting into, we had, as a board, we had discussed doing fundraising for the lease termination agreement. We've decided not to do that at this time and to try to find some other other ways to navigate that situation. Still going to terminate the lease, but we're going to try to figure out another way to handle what's being asked of us. And then we want to start assembling the radio and TV as best as we can so we can have some visibility in the community. Our best assessment at this time for the radio is to aim for streaming only. It's going to be probably a bigger lift to get back on the broadcast and we should take the time that we do have with the FCC because we're still on approved silence. We should take that time to do it right, not quickly. And I think that that will also afford us an opportunity to look at the way that WIRA was running and see if there aren't any ways that we can streamline it, condense it, whatever, because we are moving into a situation where in the future, the nearer future at least, we're going to be relying upon volunteers. So everyone's going to need to be able to be easily trained on all this equipment that's running WIRA. And AIM TV, you know, we have to start being cognizant of that we are not going to have hired staff who are going to be able to be the person to turn the alarms off or whatever needs to happen. So that is something that occurred to us just in our admin committee meeting last night. And so we are, we're going to start doing that process of trying to understand is there, are there any changes we can make? So and then, and then I'm in the process of doing this right now, which is we need to meet with the county. The board needs to meet with the county and talk to them about what is our best way to get ready to hit the ground running once the audit is done? Because we want to make sure that we are, one, very visible to the county that we're here, we intend to continue. And that when they are looking at organizations that could use some grants, we would really like some. So we want to make sure that we put ourselves out there. And what else? Oh, we have an election coming up in October. I don't know if you heard about it. It's a big deal. Everybody who is currently on the board is up for election regardless of their term. And it would be fantastic if we can find more people who want to try to sit on this board because we could use help. Many hands make light work. And we are, as a board, we are all looking within our communities for who we might cultivate to join AIM. But I think it would be a good idea for the AIM community as a whole to start looking to see if they can find anybody who wants to to come and be a part of this board or be a member and, you know, be a part of a creative community media organization. We are working on getting the, all the materials together to send out for the election. Claire is going to be working on that process of getting everything out. She has more experience than I do. This is my first election on this side of the table. And the last thing that we are talking about is to do a visioning project for AIM for the future. It's a very near future, I think, and it should not be the board led. We should find somebody outside of the board, outside of the community to help all of us, the whole membership, try to understand what it is they want to see happen with AIM. Because the board can't decide that. That has to be part of the membership. Mostly the membership and we are going to need some, I believe we're going to need some good help on guiding that process. And I don't know exactly how we're going to find this, but that's the next sort of idea that I think we're going to try to explore on how to figure out what AIM in the future is going to be doing. And that is all I have. Does anybody else have anything? Or should I turn my computer around and out there?
We have a question from Jackie Steven over Zoom.
Hi Jackie.
Hey, lots of stuff. One is, who's in the room with you?
Everybody say your name.
Well, just, I wanted to get an idea. So, you know, that's working.
Can you read here Jackie?
Hey Andrew, how are you? The second is a comment, which is there are endless numbers of ways to run without staff. So absolutely, I applaud you for like looking at it, but I don't think you need to look hard to find processes. There's many models out there, volunteer-led organizations and and I think that you're right in identifying that this is going to be a transition for this membership. But nonetheless, one that is absolutely necessary. The third was regarding the Board of Directors. So there will be, am I correct, 11 seats up for election in October?
Yeah.
And of those 11 elected seats, and then there are also three county appointments, right?
Yeah.
Cool. And how are the call for nominations, which I assume is going to be open until 45 days before the election? I'm not going to do the math right here, but sometime in mid-September, right? So that's going to get out in the next few days and aside from being sent to membership, perhaps we could brainstorm some ways to get that out to the community. Everyone kind of reaching out certainly, but there may be some places to look for, you know, specifically the skills you need. So that was most of my questions for the moment.
Right now, the tentative date for the annual meeting is October 27th. And we are aiming to have it at the Black Box, but we have not been able to make a reservation yet. The backup location will be the auditorium here. So, but for the Black Box because we'd like to have as many opportunities to make 3700 our home. So Claire, we'll get that out as soon as we can, right? About the date?
Yeah. And I have the whole sort of election calendar, which is a determined by the bylaws, the whole sort of process for that and making sure that all of the nomination form and all of that gets out to anybody who needs it. And then the date of submission, all of that will be outlined very clearly based on the dates of yeah, based on dates that depend on the
The call for nominations will have all the information.
Exactly.
And it's going out as soon as possible.
Yes. And by here, Amanda means in the Central Library, they have an auditorium there that fits up to 180 people and that will be our backup location, but love to use the Black Box Theater. It just takes a while to get things scheduled there. And then was that all Jackie? Because I can, I see Ken has a hand as well.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
I just, I think we probably know some of the answers to these questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Must have unstable video within the board and the admin committee. But I'm not sure the membership do. So a couple of questions, just to add a few words to make sure we're all on the same page. Status of the license, I believe there's been an extension. So when are we extended to? Has that been approved? The Arlington County reps, a few people have asked me about what does that signify? If I anything that the Arlington reps left the board? And do we have any sense that new reps will be appointed? And then the third and the big one and possibly the most difficult to answer is any change to the ETA for the audit completion so that we can start to really ramp things up again.
The status of the license is we are still on an approved silent mode and we are going to apply for an extension that is due by September 16th. And Ted is working on that with Michelle Bradley, who wrote the first application. The purpose of the extension is to just make sure that we have padding to get the things done. And the Arlington County, the seats on the board for Arlington County, I don't know what the purpose is. I can't speak to that. Somebody else will have to jump in on that. And at this time, I've not heard of anybody being considered for those seats. And the audit is I don't have a, I don't have a status update.
Okay, so, sorry. So at the moment, we're kind of working on the idea of maybe sometime in September was mentioned some months ago.
It could be. I mean, at this point, where are we? We're mid-August and I, yeah, I mean, I think that's that's, at this time, that's probably a good estimate.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, Amanda, your extension can take you another six months. So the drop dead is March next year for getting WERA up.
Basically, you have one year that you can work with provided that you apply for the extension.
Right. The extension takes us to, from September through March of 25.
Yep.
Yep.
Hey, there's Zach.
Question. So you have a deal for the operating budget once you get approval and it's just going to be part of the meeting? Coming though, because of
Yeah, there was
Can you repeat the question just briefly and tell me who that was from?
Yeah, this is Lee Ebert.
Hi Lee. It's nice to see your face.
Just about onboarded. So I've been an AIM member for a couple of years and my question to Amanda was what's, what kind of sense that she has for the operating budget? Once we get up and running, is this going to be part of the meeting with the Arlington County to discuss not only our potential operation, but also budget and money that would flow, some apportionment or allocation that would flow to us so that we can operate?
Yes. So prior to Valerie leaving, she drafted an FY25 budget for AIM. And much, what was in that budget was to not just carry us forward, but it was also to pay the back stuff that we still owe. And that is what I'm hoping to hear from them. As soon as the audit is complete, I'm hoping to hear that they're going to release a quarterly payment so that we can start paying some of these bills, like the staff and taking out all of these pressures so that then we can start moving forward. Katerina is gonna help with some of the work of going through the budget and trying to figure out how much can we, how much do we need to spend, basically? The one that Valerie drafted, which included, you know, older expenses was up, I think it ended at 260,000 per year of operations. But and then the idea would be that FY26 would be smaller because we would not have the debt. And then we'd have just what we're actually operating on, which would be mostly the running of the technology and rent.
Has the county indicated what became of what they had allocated for a fiscal year? Since that approval was happening just as things fell down?
No.
Who was that? Who asked the question?
And can somebody, and can someone repeat that?
It's Lynn Gordon is asking about if the county has made any explanations about if the money that was already allocated still exists or what's going on with it? And the answer is no, they have not said anything, which you can take either way. I take it personally on the side of hope, which is that it's still there waiting for us. And that will be one of the things that we need to discuss with them is, you know, when things paused in our relationship with the county board, what happened? Where is, where are the things that were already going to come to us?
And do you recall what the amount was?
I believe it was 260,000. But I'm not sure. The follow-up question was how much? Also from Lynn.
Jackie, did you have your hand up to respond to anything in particular?
Yes. I wanted to make a motion to the membership to not have a vote today to remove board members since there is an election taking place with the call for nominations about to come out and none of the board members that were on the board prior to December of 23 are running for reelection, from what I understand. So the motion is to remove the vote tonight as part of this meeting. The piece of business that was tabled for this meeting.
I second that motion. Jeff Hoffman.
Am I supposed to say that?
Yeah, you're, no, you're supposed to. Now I'll ask for a vote. Or if there's discussion.
Lynn has her hand up.
So I, this is actually a question I had in my notes earlier. I'd actually like the current board members to introduce themselves because that's never happened in a membership meeting and I think that would be a good thing. And if there are board members who are on the board and who expect to stay on the board or hope to stay on the board, but aren't present, if we can know who they are, because right now, I mean, I don't know who's on the board, not on the board and I'm sure I'm not in that regard. And I'm grateful for those of you who are on the board and doing this hard work. So I'd like to know who you are and I'd like to know a little bit about you.
Okay. Do we have to finish the motion?
Well,
Or is that in the
That's part of the discussion.
It's part of the discussion, I think, because in order to, for me, anyone, anyway, in order to vote on this, I think the motion makes a lot of sense, but in order to vote on it, I'd like to know about who I'm making them. Chat us.
I agree. We'll start this way.
So I'm Zach Jones. I apologize for the late arrival.
So sorry to hop in. Could the, Amanda, could your computer screen please be pointed towards the board member speaking?
Thank you.
I'm Zach Jones. Again, apologies for the late arrival due to a work thing. I work for Sirius XM in Washington DC. I'm a satellite radio producer. This is my entire life. This is how I've made my living for the last 10 years. I live for radio. So when I found out that my community had a radio station, I was very interested in being involved with it. Started donating to AIM and specifically trying to get money to WIRA two years ago. Beyond that, when there was a call for board members, I thought I could provide some extra peace. Like I said, this is my life. This is what I want to be involved with. I'm very interested in getting the next generation of people like me. So the workshops we did with students were very important and I'd like to see that continue on. So that's really me. Garden plot. Love riding my motorcycle around. I'm open to any questions, but pretty simple for me. I love radio. Wanted to see the next generation get involved.
All right.
Zach, are you planning on running for reelection in October?
I am for the purpose of, you know, hopefully shepherding along, making sure there's a voice in the room for the radio productions.
And to be clear, Zach was appointed to the board in May or so of this year?
Yes, in early May as a part of
As a vacancy appointment.
Yes.
Later on, later on. My name is Amanda and I I sing in a band. I run a concert series. What?
Allow us to see you.
Ah, come on. Yeah, I need my pedestal. Cool pop-up.
Where are you?
I'm right there in the dark. So I don't know that you can actually see me. And why am I here? So I am here because I love having a community, period. It's probably one of the biggest focuses of my entire life is building community and having people to hang out with. And especially content creators. That's fantastic. I like the action that you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Action shot.
Going for AMTV action.
And I am planning to stay on the board because my commitment to AIM was to see it back to health or help it fold up with respect and dignity. So whichever way it goes, I'm gonna keep on. So that's what I
Tossing it back to you.
All right. I'm not going to do an action shot for you, do you see?
It's okay. That's a really awkward.
Okay. So my name's Jennifer Keemstra and I've been with AIM since 2021. I came on as a producer for The Vinyl Vault, which is a radio show that is focused on alternative music, punk music, indie music, particularly featuring music from the DC region. So it's very, very important to me. DC has a rich history in punk and alternative music. And my show celebrates that and I celebrate that as a person. I joined the board because like many of the producers out there, I really had a passion to get AIM back to a place of health, to get back on the air. And it was really important to me to get involved in some of the details of that to really help shepherd it along. I'm part of the recovery committee, which is really narrowly focused on getting our operations back into a healthy spot and we meet fairly regularly. Right now, it's just Amanda, Dan and I on that committee. However, we will be reaching out to the greater committee to get additional membership into that committee to help get us along. In my private life or my work life, I guess, outside of AIM, I am a consultant for the federal government. I do business process improvement consulting very specifically. And so I bring a lot of that knowledge of looking at broken processes and processes that could be streamlined, improved, made more cost effective. And I bring that to AIM as a way to take a look at some of our processes that have been put into place over the course of the years and find ways to make that more economical, streamlined, easy to use and easy to support. So that is a lot of what I bring to the table. I'm going to continue to have a radio show in the future. I hope to continue to be a board member, but I leave it up to the community to see if you guys want me to continue on in that role as well. That's me.
Thank you.
It's a really awkward angle. That, Zach established the way you're doing it.
So hi everybody. My name is Dan, Dan Regal. Pardon my accent. I'm originally from Brazil. So I've been living in the US for about 15 years or so. I am a, I'm a business person. I'm a startup guy. I started my first company when I was 17. I sold it when I was 21. I, with that money, I came to America for grad school and to start other businesses. I have a consulting firm, I have an investment firm, I have a movie production firm. Among the, among all the crazy stuff around here and there. I am a proud Olympian and I have heard of AIM about 10 years ago when I took a course with Jackie. And, but I never done anything else with AIM until last year when I decided I wanted to to produce a business radio show. And I took the courses, but then there was no more AIM or WERA to to host the show. So I decided I came to ask, how can I help? Now I have experienced some building businesses, managing businesses and could that be translated to this organization? And I'm trying to do that as best as I can. Thank you all.
And Dan, are you, I don't know if you said it and I just didn't catch it. Are you planning on running for reelection in October?
Yes.
Maybe I look like I'm in the witness protection program. I know it's because of
My name is Katarina Scaldoni. I've been Arlington resident for over 30 years now. And I, how did I get involved with AIM? I think it's, you know, to make the long story short, my husband and Lee and Dan, I think, took a course and aspire to produce a radio show at WIRA. And, you know, I heard a number of those, they recorded a number of the episodes ready to broadcast when things fell apart. And I, you know, I, through him, you know, I heard about the challenges the organization was facing and I spoke to Amanda and I realized that where I can add values with my background with financial management and internal controls. Most of my career have been helping, I work with financial services companies. And I currently work at a management consulting firm where I, where my clients are financial services firms and federal government agencies and I'm helping them with accounting operations and financial reporting. And in that environment, controls are very, very Um, and, uh, in that environment, controls are very, very important. And I thought that would be something that I can add. And help this, uh, organization to turn around and establish a good name within the community again. So I'm hoping that, you know, uh, of, of, of course, there are several months ahead where I've become familiar with the. With finance, finances, the books, uh, status of the audit, developing the budget. And in that process, you know, I developed credibility with you. So when the election come. Time comes in November, in October, you know, you will, you will see, you will have a confidence in me to extend my mandate.
Room, that's it.
Awesome. I guess I am. Hello, everybody. Um. It's me. I'm Claire. Um, I am the other board member here. Um, and, um, I've been on the board since October 2021. Um, I've been in your inboxes and at many meetings, um, so I will keep this very brief. Um, but yeah, I, my term will be ending, um, and I will not be seeking reelection in October. Um, but I have continued to serve as, um, secretary, um, and. You know, we've had a lot of turnover on the board, as you know, and I've, I've desired to not be a part of, a part of that, um, and to try and keep things, um. Going in as, as stable and, you know, uh. Doing things by the books and, and keeping thing, keeping good records of things, um, as best I can. Um, because AIM is the reason why I'm able to be a freelance video editor right now. Um, I learned how to do that, um, with the Document Arlington Project under Jackie Stephen and, um. Was able to share some of that information and knowledge with kids, um. Alongside Nathan Bynum, um, for some of the student youth, um. The youth, uh, production camps in the summers, um, and so just hoping that AIM gets to continue to offer opportunities like that to, to folks like me. And that's me. And otherwise, um, Amanda, off the top of your head, um, I think. Um, with regards to Jim Thorne and Don Masters, um, I know Jim's term also expires because he's in the same group as me. His term is expiring. In October as well, and, um, I don't know if you've heard from Don about whether he's, um, also seeking reelection.
No, I haven't heard from Don. Period.
Okay. And then Jim, um, have you, do you know what his status is with reelection?
Yeah, Jim and I had a really nice conversation and he also has decided not to run for reelection. Um, but he plans to stay in the community of AIM. Um, he has, he would really like to help. Do what he can to, um, connect with, um, donors or to, uh, with. You know, any sort of content. He wants to stay a part of things, but he just, um, wants to be off the board at this time.
Roger that. And also Ken Avis, our producer's rep is here and we will have the traditional elections for, um, producer's rep. Um, the October annual meeting, um, as well.
And just to step in on that one, I've been involved in AIM, particularly in WERA since WERA started. Um, with programs there, music programs mainly focused on world jazz folk. Music, the broad umbrella of folk music, um, and, and also championing the DC music team because it's been a big part of it. And we've been bringing on live. Uh, performances by local musicians and so on. Um. In my. I am a full-time musician. That's what I do for a living. And prior to that, I used to do strategic development and facilitation. And so that's why so many years ago I decided to step up as a producer's rep in 2017. For a couple of years and then I was on the board from like 2019 for a couple of years, long involvement. Um, stepped into this producer's rep role, what would it have been? Um, like May or something like that? Um, which was seen as a temporary thing to October. And my kind of touring schedule was taken off wildly. I'm up in Canada at the moment. I'm going to be in Europe all through. Born again in October, so I'm not going to be standing for reelection in this role. I just don't think I've got the time at the moment, uh. But lots of interest and the producer's rep role is really. Can be a really positive role. I want to emphasize that. It's not a student. It's, I'm sorry, it's not a trade union rep. Backing with management is, is quite the opposite. It's trying to, um, form bridges and communications, do some positive stuff. And I really encourage people to stand for that position and be proactive in it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I add something to?
Andy is asking us a question.
Oh, what's the name? Andy Rosenberg. Been around for a while. And, uh, board member for a few terms, uh, like that. Uh, and actually, okay, how it started. Uh, met here in 2012. With, um, one other, uh, staff person from, uh, Arlington and media, media. Lori, what's her last name? McGardle, thank you. Sorry. My agent friends. This is my introduction. I wanted to. I, uh, but this is the follow-on. Are you saying that I'm going out too long?
I'm just asking.
Okay, I just wanted to establish credit here. Okay, so, uh, she and I, uh, had a. A interest or, uh, call out to the community to get people interested in LBFL reading. And, uh, it's just kind of ironic. We're meeting in the same room.
Andy, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, would you be able to come closer to the, to the computer just so that the folks, um, online can also hear you?
Well, and is the comment in regards to the motion that's on the floor?
Yeah.
I.
As much as, as much as Ken's, um, uh, comments.
But.
No, is it meant, no, I can, I can bring it. It's more directly to, um, uh, the point about, um, visioning that was brought up.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor.
It's my apologies.
We'll come back to, and also, um, just so that you know, have, I do see your hand and you'll be the first person I call on, um, once we. Wrap this, um, discussion around this motion.
Okay.
So now do I do something about it? I don't know.
On the, on the motion.
Yeah.
Just ask if there's any more discussion.
Any more discussion?
Call the question.
What? I called the question? Okay.
Which means we vote.
Oh, okay. The statement I'm supposed to say, I called the question? Okay.
But you can just call for a vote if there's no.
All right, let's have a vote. Oh, wait. Uh, yes, the, uh, was a motion to, uh, remove the vote at this time. From the agenda. Thank God you all are here.
We're gonna vote to not vote.
Correct.
On the lack of.
Removal of board members.
Board members.
You're voting, you're voting to table. You're voting to table.
No, we're not tailpilling. We're removing.
Oh, wait, well, where did Jackie say table?
No, I'm not sure who that was.
That was Jackie.
Yeah, what I have written down from Jackie's motion, um, is that Jackie moved to, um.
Remove.
Membership.
Replace if I had said table. To put this vote from this evening's.
Because in the, um, for context, um, in the, uh, April meeting of members, um, the desire had been to, um. Have a vote of confidence from the membership in the board, um, and it was decided to, at that time, to table that, um. Vote to the next, um, special meeting of members, which is taking place now. Um, and so now we need to have a, um, motion, which Jackie has introduced and Jeff Hoffman has seconded. Um, to remove that vote of confidence, um, in the board members. Due to the election that is taking place very soon. Um. Yes. Um, so in terms of process, um, if you are a, uh, current. Member, if you are in person, um, we'll tell you those vote, we'll do, um, if you vote in favor of removing. The, or of, of not doing a vote of confidence in the board, um. If you are in favor of this, um, if you are in person or on Zoom and you are an active member eligible to vote. Um, please raise your hand, um, and turn on your video so that I can see you. Um, and if somebody in the room can count how many people are physically raising their hands in the room, that would be great. And I'll count the, the Zoom on, on screen.
We've got 12. In the room.
Okay, I see three, um, hands raised physically, um, in favor on Zoom. Um. One, two, and then, um, folks who are, have raised their hands in Zoom with the little emoji, um, should I count that as a, a vote in favor of, of that motion? Okay. Sounds good. Fabulous, fabulous. That is. Okay. I see five on Zoom and we've counted 12 in person. Um. If you should like to vote no, um, you would like it, you would like to vote no on the, on the motion, um, at hand. Um, please, please raise your hand, whether you are in person or on Zoom.
That is zero in the room.
Zero in the room. Um, and I don't see any on Zoom as well, um, any abstentions, anyone who wishes to abstain from the member, this member vote.
Yeah. That's, uh, what's it? One, two, three, four, five abstaining.
Great. Five abstaining in person. I see no, um, indication of abstentions via Zoom. Um, so with that, we have, uh, 17 eyes, zero nays, five abstaining, um, the eyes have it and, um, the motion to. Strike the vote of confidence, um, in the board from the members, um, has been approved. We will not have the confidence vote. Thank you so much.
Great. Um, quickly, Claire, how many people do we have waiting with questions?
Um, we have, have, um, has been waiting, um, since, to ask a question since before the motion, uh, was introduced and then, um, Andy Rosenberg, I believe, um, also had a, another, uh, topic for discussion.
For those keeping track, we have about. Forty minutes left in this room, so. Um, they like to kick us out at 10 minutes to the, to the hour. So. Um, let's go with Heff first, Andy, if you don't mind.
I'm unmuted.
There he is. There he is.
I am not eligible to vote because I am now a foreigner. Uh, living in Hagerstown, Maryland.
It's a fine town.
I have a big house. And come December, I have enough room to store. The archival video equipment and also the U-Matic and, uh. Oh, what's the other obsolete format tape player? Uh, Beta. Max. Tape machines, uh, hopefully to get them repaired. And hopefully to start transcribing some of this history. To modern media, which I had been volunteering to do since Paul LaVallee was here.
Right.
So. Uh, in terms of that stuff, it's presently temporarily in storage, um. My house has air conditioning. Uh, so that would be, uh, one way to handle it. I mean. I can rent a bloody truck to come and, uh, retrieve this stuff. Uh, it's not the greatest solution, but it's free. At least to AIM. So that's that. Uh, in the olden days before COVID, I used to go with AIM stuff to the farmer's markets. And let people know that there was such a thing as AIM and WERA. And I understand that it was decided not to have a booth at the county fair. Uh, because I, I guess that might cost money. Uh, the farmer's markets, I don't think do, but that would be a, a thing to toss out. Uh, to remind Arlingtonians that there is still such a thing as AIM and it might help a little bit with fundraising. And, uh, so I wanted to put that out. Uh, by the way. Non-staff operation of Arlington Independent Media. I go back to 1981. And I think Jackie remembers being the first full-time staffer hired sometime was 84? Maybe 85? So, yeah, it can be done. It can be run on a volunteer basis. Uh, last thing I've got is a few meetings ago, I pointed out that Arlington Independent Media does have its very own YouTube channel. And I see that somebody has posted a couple of the meetings there. And if they would like to make that official AIM YouTube channel. Available for uploads on the part of some of the producers, both radio and television. I can put up some content. Uh, I produced the Arlington Weekly News remotely from here for a year. And right now Arlington County official news site is pretending that the freeze never happened. So I think it would be, uh, uh, as I say, that AIM still has that resource. So I wanted to put that as an idea. Anyway. That's as much as I can do as a non-voting, uh, member. But, uh, I'll do what I can.
Thank you for your service.
Uh, that's the obituary.
Uh, well. Well, hmm, we'll follow up with you about your offer, about storage. We haven't even gotten to, um. We haven't even gotten anywhere other than to move it into its new location. It may be that the archive will live happily at 3700. We need to just determine all of that, but I'm.
I know, I ticked in $250 to enable the move to the new location. So, yeah, I, I am very sincere in that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh. I, I was prepared to rent the van to come down from Hagerstown. They said, like, well, it'd probably be better to, uh, send some money to pay for real movers, which.
Yeah, it worked out great.
Stage, I think, was a wise decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I wanted to put it out there. So. The option exists.
Yes. So I've got, I've got that in the notes, um, and I'll, you know, when we, when we figure out what the next move for the items at Quincy Street is. Everyone in the membership will know. I, um, I can assure you of that. Um, I did want to let you know, Heff, that the not being at the fair was not a mon- money situation. It was purely a. Um, a decision. First on that there was no plan. To officially be there. There was a hope and an idea. To do it because.
It was announced at one of the previous meetings. I have the notes, but it doesn't matter. It's over.
Because I, it was my idea, so I know it wasn't a plan. It may sound like a.
I just thought it was a plan because they said it was going to happen. It's over.
Yes. But I want, I wanted to let you know that the reasoning, uh, because I think the reasoning will be important to you. The reasoning was that. Um, I wanted to be sure that when we go out into the community and talk about AIM, we have a. We have something clear and concrete to talk about what people can come and see or come and get or come and do. And we just don't have that right now. Um, and I, what I didn't want to have happen was us to go out there on shaky ground. And n- not look like we have our stuff together. So, um, you know.
I do recall, uh, having that thought when I was prepared to come down, thinking to myself, so what the hell am I going to tell people?
Exactly.
I did prepare a bunch of historical stuff with a please preserve our history pitch. So there was that, but yeah, I concur. It was. Not our best book.
Right. So it's not a lot.
So that's that. Uh, let's move on.
Yeah. The, so, and you know, the, the YouTube offer, um, we know it's there. And, um. We'll, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about how we're gonna make use of that.
Yeah, as I say, it would be great for an official, I mean, Arlington Weekly News has its own little channel and Sustainable Scoop has their own little channel. It'd be great though for there to be a. Official. Voice of Arlington Independent Media, both for the radio and, and the TV side.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, that's gonna be one of the things.
That's that.
All right. Thank you, Heff. Andy, you're up. Yes, you're gonna have to address the computer. Yes, you're gonna have to address the computer. Absolutely.
Thank you. It's gonna be a while.
It'll be a more flattering angle.
Smoke if you've got it.
You have till seven fifty, unless you want an answer, then you only have till seven thirty.
Well, that's a good way of not having this controversy. Uh, so uh, Heff's generous offer, I just want to make sure somebody keeps in mind that if you store assets of uh of Ames uh over a private house, uh, he's gonna need some insurance uh for for that equipment. I don't know what the val- current value is, but um. While generous, you just got to some of the practicality. Uh, and I hope you can do that. I was gonna follow up with uh with Ken Davis uh and uh him talking about, he was doing a very good job, but I know he was very conflicted with his uh uh, with his producer's rep and uh his uh uh his wise uh guidance uh will be missed and I hope he still stays uh involved in it. Um, I will bring up that uh in history um that Ken some years back, and he can tell you um the year, um, actually with his, with his background, um, conducted a visioning uh session uh, a series, actually, of them for uh uh, the board. And um, he would have some ideas about that and probably would know some people. So I would, I would say to what, push him in a corner and try to get some information from him about it. Or uh, understanding um about what's out there as far as uh staffing goes and and how to bring the uh organization uh back to life with concentration on radio, which is what I'm usually concentrated on. There is next month uh a group of some wild and crazy uh L P F M people called Grassroots Radio Conference. And some people, I know Amanda knows about it, and some other people may know about it as well. A collection, a gathering, it's it's almost like a Grateful Dead concert uh of of people involved. Uh, doing amazing things. I've I've been able to uh drop in and I would encourage everybody here to drop in on when in your travels, to drop into an L P F M uh in some other part of the country. My my latest one was uh in Rochester, New York at uh W A uh W A M O, Whamo, no, Way Out There, Way Out, sorry. Um, and uh, very cool. And they started, they do have a staff, but they're all unpaid and that's the way they started. And it took some very uh dedicated freaky uh uh radio mavens uh to to step up and and give it their time. I frankly, I don't know how they do it, but there's a number of stations. Uh, and I propose that anybody who wants to learn about what is out there and models, programming, all kinds of uh uh fundraising, things like that, should um investigate uh going, going to the Grassroots Radio Conference. And uh, that uh you can find on uh by Googling it. Takes place in New Orleans, which is another bonus this year. And um.
An ad for the grassroots conference?
Somebody's got to. Nobody else has mentioned it.
You have four minutes to seven thirty if you want an answer.
I don't want an answer. I want people, I I, that's a kind of call to action. Um, I think if you want, you know, if you want a way of proceeding with this organization, um, I think you need uh to be hearing what some of these people have done. And that, that's the end of my list for now.
It's a good idea to to visit other uh locations. I have to travel for work, so I'm gonna see if some of the cities I go to has got some.
The only other thing I'll say is if you want to see a list of the stations and suggestions, um, the L P F M for uh Dummies book by Sharon Scott is a must. Uh, L P F M, or I think it's maybe it's Willpower FM for Dummies by Sharon Scott. And uh, available wherever Dummies Books are.
Who's next?
Can I get a comment?
Sure.
Call out, should I go to the chair?
Yeah, please.
This is Michael Shea. Um, your reference to the county fair, I think, makes sense. Uh, the point I would make is um, at some point, I think all five of the county board members show up at the county fair, hang out. And if anyone is going, yeah, I think it'd be worth seeking them out. You can find them inside. They're not always by the uh county Democratic booth, but they're often there. And just bring up Abe and let them know that you think we need to get this started again, because I think it's important for them to hear that from people in the community that they encounter at places like the county fair.
Yeah.
So that'd be helpful. That's a good call to action, I think all members can do.
That should be something that's sent out to the community as well.
Hey, everyone, it's uh me, Jeff Hoffman. Um, in the last few months, I've been working on the Mailchimp um email database as well as the Rooshare membership database. Um, it's not a hundred percent perfect. If you are on the Zoom or in the room and you're not getting emails from the Board of Directors, um, I can, please let me know in the room or on Zoom. You can email me at coolpapa at jeff at gmail dot com. And I'll look into what's going on, why you're not getting emails. Um, I know Ed spoke up on the Discord uh platform and I fixed him today. So if there's anybody else, uh, you know, let me know. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for your service.
Can I ask a question regarding the Discord?
Yeah.
Is there any traffic on Discord?
A little bit, not much.
Started off.
It started strong and the the best way, the best way that people are communicating right now is receiving emails from the board. Uh, there's nothing happening on Facebook. There is nothing happening on Instagram as far as I know. And Discord is um Bjorn and a handful of people who are, you know, trying to move things along and and Ken.
And just an FYI, if you uh do have a Discord account, you might want to check in on it because I did recently and I had to re uh connect my email account to it. That's why I wasn't getting notifications. So if you uh were one of the original people to sign up, it, I think it times out or something, so just FYI.
Give me one second, Andy.
Oh, I just, well, my name is, should I sit there?
Yes, please.
After um this fellow goes, I just want to note that Alvaro Hernandez and Bjorn Munson um both have their hands raised on Zoom. So they'll, they'll be next in the queue, but.
Great, thank you.
I'll make this super great. Uh, my name is Izad Obaid. I'm a, I'm a member, been a member for a long time. But this is the first time or the second time I've been to a meeting. Uh, um, I recently reached out to you, uh Claire, and you were able to connect me to the fine people over the communications team. And it started with you, Amanda. Thank you so much for talking to me about this. Um, I wanted to just uh propose an idea on the fundraising effort, but I don't know if I should just sit with the communications team at some point and talk about it, or is this where a place to discuss it?
Uh, this is a fine place.
Okay, yeah.
Give us a, your, like, your elevator pitch.
Oh, yeah, uh, Women in Film and Video, which is a big organization here in DC, does this thing where they go to specific venues and show works that are being sort of uh, you know, shined up and 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 and, you know, pitched essentially to each other, to the filmmakers, and then they're shown in certain places. One of the places is Sun Cinema in Mount Pleasant. I realize that these moments are actually great moments for people to get to know more about their organization and then donate money. And I feel like that's something we could do. That's it. That's my elevator pitch, yeah.
Right.
So.
Just want to share something very relevant to what.
The library closes in about thirty minutes. Arlington and the children's area is now closed. All computers and records on the second floor and the books are on the first floor will close in fifteen minutes. The checkout desk and the garage close promptly at eight P M.
You make priority getting a central information uh site up, like a uh Facebook site or something, so we can, so we're going to wait like, you know, a month between communications.
No, but.
How do we get updates?
Uh, Amanda, could you repeat the question for the folks on Zoom?
Andy was asking whether or not we can have a central location for communications like a Facebook. And I'm saying that um.
Doesn't have to be two-way. It's just like a report from the board or something like that more frequent than than um this call.
Well, if if, if I may, say something. I think that, you know, um, what you're asking is to do more places, more things. And it's not uh, it's not that we're not doing things. It's that, you know, the last couple of weeks, there hasn't been much to discuss. I mean, this was, you know, I, I led off with something that happened in July. So not a lot has happened in the last few weeks and so wasn't a need to do another update. That being said, um, I don't think that a I think that the best way for people in the community of A I M to be updated with what's happening here is through emails to the membership list and to the community who sign up to hear about it. Um, asking the board to do stuff on Facebook and then have to go do that as well as other things is, it's just one more thing. And I think we can figure out a way to do it through a more direct route.
You guys on the board have pledged to be more open and to be more communicative than than the long stretch we had before that. All I'm asking is to find some way to stay in touch with it. It doesn't even have to be two-way. Just say hi. Nothing happened this this week or the past two weeks or.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll tell you this. I thought about that, Andy, and honestly, um, as a as a person, I just felt like that's not a way to have information, just to send out something every week to say, I don't have anything to say.
Because you do, you do run a real risk. I mean, if every week we hit you with, nothing's happening, nothing's happening, nothing's happening. You're gonna see those emails or not, maybe not you, but people see those emails and go, oh, Jesus, another.
I'm just saying that more frequent.
Sure.
And I'm a thousand percent with you on wanting communication.
It's another reason to have something specific like an email because it will have a date that it's sent. So, you know.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I I don't care. You're just something to communicate.
We was, I promise you, when we have things to say, we're gonna say them. But we have to have things to say. I mean, that's, that's kind of uh, that's one of the, that's one of the challenges of of doing the work is that there's, you know, that we might have nothing to say. But I will say this, as I say to everybody all the time, I'm writing, like, you can write to me, you can call me, you can, you know, I'm happy to come meet with you. There's, there's all kinds of ways that we can, if you have a question, you can ask it.
To experience. Come on, let's.
Yeah, we have some questions online.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying the communication.
I think the communications is fine, as is.
No, Claire, who do we have?
Sorry, excuse me?
You have somebody waiting?
We have um Alvaro Hernandez and Bjorn Munson um waiting to ask questions. And we have about ten-ish minutes left until we need to um wrap this meeting up.
Yep.
But thank you so much for your comment, Andy. I appreciate, appreciate you uh raising your voice.
Thank you, Claire.
Alvaro, uh, you're up next.
Hello there. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much for giving me the time to speak a little bit. I would have my camera on, but the storage room that I'm currently working in does not have adequate lighting, so I'm going to have to stick with audio only for now, if that's okay. Um, I'd just like to say really quick, I'd like to give a huge thank you and a shout out to Bjorn Munson, uh Cool Papa Jeff and Ken Avis, who are basically the foundations of the Discord server that is currently active on Discord. And for that, I thank them. It has been a very solid form of communication, at least for my producer's end. Um, for those who don't know, I'm a host on W E R A. I produced a show on Friday nights up until we've shut down called Studio Ninety-Six. Um, I've been with the station since twenty eighteen. And uh, I guess to make a, you know, a long story sh- short, obviously with the shutdown and everything, it's, we're approaching almost seven months that we've been off the air. And as producers, we want to keep listeners that we have fostered over a long period of time engaged and wanted to keep them updated as well. Obviously, we're sort of the connection between things that are happening at the station and things that, you know, we can relay to our listeners. Um, I also, I'd like to say thanks to Jennifer as well, because through the Discord also, we sort of uh, got a slight update as far as how operations, as far as getting the station back up and running are going and felt a a little bit of uh, uh, I get, I don't know if joy is the right word, but a little bit of excitement with the mention of possibly getting a stream back up and running. So to keep things quite simple, is there a sort of window or timeline that we can expect the stream possibly being up and running? Because there are alternatives for the radio station end as far as, you know, doing something on YouTube. But that comes with its limitations, at least from a radio perspective, because you have to think about music copyright and getting audio struck down. And you don't want to have something up on YouTube that is absolutely silent or has blips of silence throughout it. So having a solid stream obviously is a great first step to being able to reestablish the FM signal. So my question would be, with the stream uh plans that are currently in motion, when can we expect something, or at least when can we expect to possibly start generating content once more? Thank you.
That's all you. You want me to ask something? Okay. Um, so uh, this is a very, very recent discussion um that we had on on Friday evening um of what are the steps that we can take to uh iteratively work towards getting back uh on the air. And um, we, we had a discussion about um starting our streaming. Um, uh, first, because that is, is going to be a more efficient way uh for us to to get set up and and get going. So we do have uh an individual uh who is uh supporting us, uh who has knowledge and expertise in this area. Uh, they are anonymous. Um, and then have asked to be kept that way. Um, but um, it's, it's very important to note um, that um, they, they are making it a priority. Um, and um, as soon as um, they have an understanding of of what it's going to take, taking a look at of what the situation is and and what all we need to get set up. Um, they're, they're going to give us an update um so that we can get uh back on the air. But it's going to be sooner rather than later. Uh, um, hopefully uh within about a month's time, um, we can get it set up and going. But as soon as we have a a better understanding of ETA, we'll give you plenty of notice so that people can uh generate um some material and have that prepared and and ready for for when we're uh up and and going for for streaming. So uh, hopefully that answers your questions for now.
And Bjorn is next.
Yep, and I see we've got like nine minutes left, so I'll try and be uh relatively uh brief. I just wanted to follow up on some of the things that were discussed before. I'd uh second the idea of cosponsoring events or modeling things from like Women in Film and Video. They're a great organization. I've been a member for uh probably twenty years. I know I'm not a woman, but they allow non-women and they're awesome. Uh, in regards to the communications, I'm definitely not a Discord guru, uh but I'm happy to mult- uh to basically amplify whatever signals coming out. So like Mailchimp is awesome because it gives a URL, so I can place that in Discord, or I'm happy to put that on all the Facebook feeds. Uh, because one thing's, I I agree, the direct answer of email, that's very clear. One of the advantages of a Discord or a Facebook can be, you can look back and see how recent things are and some of the people just are not as engaged. Uh, and so that's hopefully one advantage of that communications uh platform. I would love, and this is a long-term suggestion, my understanding is Slack uh is free or low cost for nonprofits. So that might be something that could be maintained, for instance, in the member portal uh or related to the AIM website when that's going. Um, because again, I'm not a, I'm not a Discord person, uh much like Heff, I am a foreigner. Uh, so um, yeah, I'm I'm not an Arlington County thing. You might encounter Munsons who are actually Arlington County residents, so I just want to make that clarification as well. Uh, but one thing I would mention with the, uh, and this gets into an actual question, I promise, uh, with the email. If you can think in terms of any sort of follow-up. uh, or referencing previous things talked about in these meetings about dates, even tentative dates. I think that will make all the messages and anything we put on Facebook or Discord more sticky, as it were, and people can start visualizing success and other things. For instance, there was a great email saying, hey, we need help moving stuff. That's all I ever heard about it. I didn't hear any follow-up. There was no picture of like, hey, we did it. Hey, thank you for so-and-so, so-and-so, and so-and-so. And that kind of uh, at-a-boy, at-a-girl stickiness, I think will help people realize things are going on. I would love to amplify those signals. I know that's, it's a heck of a lot of work, uh, which then leads to uh, my one question. I think you confirmed some of the things. I'm trying to get an idea about timeline and caveat the bejesus out of it uh, of how tentative it is, please, but just, I think uh, for members to know. I heard the audit would be September, but I'm gonna say September at the earliest, possibly uh, post-election. The visioning, I'm guessing it's post-election and the streaming within thirty days at the earliest, but also possibly post-election. So that's, that's my thing of like any tentative dates that you all want to, to mention for those things, audit, streaming, I think we got the answer, and the whole visioning thing, uh, cause that will all get into the big question. I think, I know I, I emailed you guys of everybody being like, when are we back on the air? So, thank you.
Thank you. Any last things?
I just, this is Lynn. I just have one offer for producers who would like to maintain radio audiences in anticipation of W E R A being back on the air. Um, I have been on Pacifica for nearly two years. I have helped four W B R A producers get on Pacifica in the last year, and I am happy to help people do that. Pacifica Radio Network is a distribution system for non-commercial radio stations. And they have about two hundred and fifty radio stations around the country. Um, I'm currently on seventeen stations through them. Um, and uh, it's a, it's a, it's a very nice system. It's a very nice way to grow your audience and it doesn't make you any less loyal to your immediate community, but it allows you to stay fresh in your production even when you can't be on the air in the community.
The library closes in fifteen minutes. All computers and rushers on the second floor and the books are on the first floor are now closed. If you need to apply for any library card, please do so now. The second floor and the rushers on the first floor will close in ten minutes. Thank you for using the library.
Any last questions or comments? Or as some might say, any final words?
Thank you for the board for keeping us, you know, and uh, you know, tapping in some of your fairly decent as well.
All right, um.
Also just wanna um, say out loud um, that the next time um, the board will be meeting is on um, Tuesday, September, Tuesday, September tenth? Yes, Tuesday, September tenth, um, in the Black Box Theater as well as via Zoom. Um, and um, please expect a, a big email with um, the election and annual meeting um, timeline information. Um, and as much as we, you know, can viably put in there about other pertinent timeline-related things um, to, to your point Bjorn, um. Yeah, um, we'll do, we'll do the best we can. Um, and yeah, expect emails about election things and, and definitely please um, please be working your networks to figure out who can be in the strategic leadership um, of this, of this organization to come.
Great. I hereby adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Thank you for all being here.
Thank you.